Like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council meeting for August 25th, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, will you call the roll? Anderson here.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Buncey.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stan.
Here. We have a forum. Um, you know, I want to spend a moment, uh, mending Douglas tonight, uh, for their, the great work they are doing to provide, uh, sustainable and affordable housing on Wiley Street. They, um, City Council last Monday passed an agreement to go forward with a development that would include, um, affordable apartments, um, housing targeted to household incomes between forty thousand and a hundred thousand a year and, um, and then market rate housing. And I know it has been met with some, uh, frustration from neighboring, um, homeowners, but, um, it is, it addresses a huge need in the tri-communities and one that we don't have the land to, um, address. So, um, it, I think it, it fits with their master plan, which is great. And, um, I'm really excited for our communities because our workers will benefit from it, um, as well. So hats off to them.
And Ryan, turning it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted, good evening, Council. Um, some really great news, uh, following your approval of the holiday lighting, uh, after your approval of the, the expansion of the lighting, which really kind of lined up with what, uh, the Convention of Visitors Bureau was hoping to, to see, you know, last year when I was before them and asked for some grant dollars. And I said, well, City Council's approved some additional lighting. Uh, I'm going to make a, a big ask to you to, to help with some of that, that cost to do the electrical upgrades that are necessary. And then, um, you know, kind of help pay for the, the first year. And so, um, I kind of laid it out for them and kind of showing them like how much the city was investing in the electrical upgrades just to maintain what we have and how much that was going to cost next year. And then obviously the cost to, uh, expand, uh, which kind of broke down to being about, uh, a request for them to pay for about twenty-eight percent and, you know, us picking up the rest, which is a lot, right? Uh, we, we know that. Um, and, um, a huge thank you to the CVB. They, uh, approved a twenty thousand dollar, two hundred, uh, twenty thousand, two hundred dollar grant, uh, to, uh, help us expand the, the holiday lighting, um, this year. So a huge thank you to them and their board is unanimous. Um, they're very excited and grateful to the council for your approval of, of, of some additional lighting. Um, they're still working hard to, to bring the, uh, the light installation out here to, uh, in, in Cook Park, uh, during the shoulder seasons. Uh, they're working on maybe kind of an event, uh, kickoff event around that. So you may see something coming, um, soon, uh, on that. But-
Is that where that artist is going to be?
Yep, exactly right. Yep, exactly. The sidewalk kind of going down to the, the water. Yep, exactly. So, um, Mount Bald Head Restaurant, we had a pre-construction, uh, meeting last week. Uh, we're still on track to kick that project off, uh, after, uh, the Mount Bald Head Challenge. Um, so you should see some, some work happening after the Mount Bald Head Challenge out there to kind of get the, the, get the site ready. But, uh, that project's going to be, uh, underway here soon, or at least I guess it's been underway from my perspective. It takes a lot of, you know, free planning and work to get, get here, but the actual construction work. So, um, master plan, you should see the, uh, survey coming out soon, the, the survey that you reviewed at your last workshop meeting that should be coming out soon, along with kind of an invite to folks, uh, to a more of an open house type setting. We're working on securing hopefully the high school for that. Uh, the planning commission last week kind of discussed some stations and boards and kind of a drop-in event. People don't have to be there the entire time to, uh, to kind of meet with folks and, and gather some further feedback, uh, there. But we'll share that survey in a number of variety, a variety of different formats and really work the, to get the word out on that. Um, other than that, has been busy doing double duty, I'll admit. I, a lot on my plate right now, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ryan?
No, well done on the CVB.
No, thank you, CVB.
Great.
Agreed.
All right, uh, any agenda changes? Okay, takes us to, uh, we don't have any guest speakers, correct? Okay, takes us to public comment on agenda items only. Any public comments? Anyone online? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the, uh, consent agenda on page three. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass our consent agenda for August 25th, 2025.
I will second.
Any questions, discussion? Chris?
Yes, uh, thank you, ma'am, Mayor. Uh, number C, special event, the Havana Club Ride. When I read that, it, oh, it talked about, they had talked to the sheriff about, is the sheriff going to help with that?
Uh, he said sheriff, he had reached out to Sergeant Haas, uh, and just started talking to him a little initially about the event. So he's re, he's referring to Sergeant Haas.
Okay.
But we have not held the safety meeting yet. That's the third thing.
This is my next question.
Yeah, he's been just reaching out and just asking questions to all of us at this point.
Solid as pain. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, so roll call vote. Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Buncey?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, staff reports, we heard from Ryan, yes?
I do have a question, ma'am, Mayor. Can you update us on the homeless issue that has been floating around that I'm not sure where it's at right now?
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been working to, to try to get an update from, uh, a service provider here in, in Aligon County, On Point and a social worker there. So, uh, I think she was out a portion of last week. And so I, I followed up again today and haven't, haven't heard back. But, um, so I had a, a meeting with, um, them to get the kind of, uh, you know, gather some more details, uh, as far as their engagement and, and where things stand. So, um, so they've engaged with the individual that, that has been, um, staying at, at Wick's Park. Um, they explained to me that, that he's an individual that is a, a community member of ours, that he actually had housing here in the community, uh, lost that housing. Um, so this isn't a situation where somebody necessarily has come from somewhere else. Um, it's, he is a member who is homeless in our, uh, community itself. They indicated that, that he's not, um, uh, willing to maybe accept, you know, emergency shelter at this time. In fact, we don't have that as an option here in Aligon County. Obviously there's options in, in Holland and other communities, uh, but that's not something that he's interested in. But he's very much, uh, willing to work with them, uh, or, uh, the VA because he is a veteran, uh, to obtain more permanent housing. And so the, the VA and On Point were having some discussions about which caseload was most appropriate, uh, to have somebody work with them. Um, so when we had our meeting, that's what they were still working to, to kind of sort out. But, um, they've indicated that they have his phone number, that he's very, he picks up the phone, uh, must be charging it somewhere because they, you know, he does talk with them when, when they reach out and, and, and has been willing to answer questions, is very engaged, uh, from their perspective with, um, some services and their advice as, um, you know, social workers and folks that, um, work to help address homelessness is to allow them to kind of continue their work, um, and that they're hopeful that they'll be able to continue work with them to obtain some sort of permanent housing.
I'd like to see that put on a workshop. Uh, it's, it's a complex, complex issue.
True.
And, uh, it's, it's, again, member of the community, but yet then we either have community members on the other side too that have expressed concerns about it. So, um, I'd like to at least have it on a workshop, maybe meet with the service providers. I know they have a, it's a call to, Eva County has one where they're set up to deal with issues like this and maybe see, um, I mean, if he just, if he decides to continue not to accept, then what? So I just think it would be a, a good time to have it on a workshop.
I defer to the council and whether or not you wish to, to workshop something along those lines.
Yeah, I would support that.
Um, I just a real quick note, I was told by, uh, folks that lived across the street that he was gone for quite a few days. Um, but then, um, I believe he's back. So, so-
And I was there.
Just spit out.
Sorry. I was down there Friday just talking with a couple of business owners and had asked about, and one of the business owners said that they have not seen any disruptive behavior or any problems with people that are using the park. As a matter of fact, one of the business owners told me that the, this, this individual was at a picnic bench and had his stuff spread out and a family came up and asked to use the bench and he was cleared his stuff away and, you know, didn't put up any arguments. So, you, it's an awful situation. It's very complex, as Councilmember Anderson said, but it sounds like-
Peterson.
Excuse me, Peterson. Um, uh, it, it, you know, it's, he's being respectful.
Yeah.
Not causing, not causing problems.
Yeah, I, I'll note that, uh, he is a member of the community. Uh, when my mother lived here, he befriended my mom and, uh, they would visit and have cigarettes together. Um, very friendly guy. Um, he would do little errands for my mom. Um, but, uh, he's a, he's not a har, harmful or, um, I don't think he's a threat to the community at all.
No, I'm not insinuating he is. I just think if it's an issue this complex, we need to, need to see what's available out there. Um, you know, a little deeper dive into the services available, especially if he's a veteran.
So Ryan is, is working that? Do, I mean, is there a sense from more council? I mean, does everybody want to workshop it or do we just want the city manager to continue?
I don't mind meeting with Ryan alone.
Yeah, I, I just, I wanted to, I mean, just-
I, I don't know. I, i- is it important? I, I don't know. Is it important that we should, um, uh, you know, have an ordinance or of some kind? You know, I, I don't know if that's, that's necessary or not. Um, you know, much like we have for Oval Beach, but-
Ordinance could be quite complicated.
Right.
And quite a slippery, quite a slippery-
Right.
Lo.
Well, especially with the recent Supreme Court ruling on homelessness. And I know Traverse City is going through this.
Precisely.
And, uh, so I think there's, it, it's, I, I, again, I'm not trying to, uh, throw down on, on the gentleman.
Oh, yeah, you're in your-
But, but I, I think it's something that we need to have a little bit more background on if, for other options too. Not that we'll go down an ordinance, not that we'll do any kind of, well, I don't know what else we, I don't know what else we can do, you know? But it just seems that, and I'd be glad to just meet with Ryan alone if that's, but-
I personally think that might be the best way. I, I've, you know, done what I can informally with post 137, alerting all the membership to, to the situation. I, I think a number of us have reached out and I, and I do think people in the community are trying to assist the gentleman that he's familiar with. So I, I mean, I, I've, I've also observed, you know, he's, he's not causing any trouble. And I do think he is actually being supported by some members of the community in various ways. I think I've seen him leaving one of the churches up on Aligon Road as well.
Yeah, I have no problem looking into it myself. I have no problem calling these other service area people and finding out what's available and what they've done with him and what they plan on doing should anyone else arrive.
And, and my position on this would be is that this is a very unique situation. It's not the first homeless person we've had in town, but to making sure that the city has a, not even a policy, but just that we know where to go for resources to help individuals in this kind of a situation more quickly and more, and not to say it hasn't been effective, but just if it were to occur again, here's the exact resources that we have identified and here's who's going to be engaged and just more along those lines.
So I think having, you know, heard Ryan talk about this, you know, he started with the sheriff who's been working with On Point and with the VA. I mean, part of it is just, you know, the, the time it takes for them then to come and make contact with him. So I feel like from our end, the process short of then debating whether we want to, um, you know, put some ordinances in place, we've got that and we've, and I, I don't think we're there.
No, I, I dealt with social services.
Right.
And so I would like to, to know what we have available here and, and kind of the timeline that's happening. Cause this has been, he's been-
Yeah, for, it's been more than a month, so.
Okay.
I mean, maybe perhaps just to report out from the manager on kind of what we've learned. I mean, I, I, I'm sympathetic to Councilmember Peterson's point of view because, you know, winter is coming.
Right, and that-
You know, and this is going to be problematic for the gentleman.
Right.
I, I don't know if anybody's ever noticed, but s- somebody I think lives by the church. It's in the township, but I think they've actually got an ice fishing shanty out in the woods that they live in during the winter. And I don't know who it is, but, you know, I mean, a lot of this stuff happens. I mean, a lot of people are living in their vehicles.
Sure.
We have a number of examples.
That the gentleman on his bike, when people know him as Billy, you know, um, there, there are a few folks that, uh, you know, we've seen it, you know?
I guess, I guess I'm just, I guess I'm suggesting we just sort of pan discreetly and-
I thi, yeah, I don't know if we need a workshop.
I'm fine with that. I-
I don't know.
If we have the background, I can pull things up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly has the background and, and, and I know On Point's definitely thinking about the, the cooler weather that's coming too. And I'm, I'm hoping that their next update will be, um, give all of you a, a lot more, um, of a progress update. I, I, I know I haven't been able to in the last couple of weeks. I apologize.
Thank you.
Good question. Um, so we're in the consent agenda, right? No, we passed that. Okay, now we get to boards, commissions and committees. Dan, you're up.
Um, this will not be a particularly long one. Uh, shows the picture from the, uh, from the sidewalk sale where I guess the sheriff's officers at the south end and fire service had, at the north end. Uh, another thing I wanted to point out, done this before, so forgive me. See the little girl in the pink pants there kind of in the foreground? You can see her size compared to the height of the front of the truck. And the driver's head roughly, you can draw a line from his head over that hood and it will leave you with about an eight to 10 foot space in front of that truck where the driver cannot see if there is anyone there. That's why the fire service continues to harp on parade safety and what have you. Anyway, sorry. Beating a dead horse probably relates to sick or-
Well, no, Dan, you're not. Um, is, is the recommendation of the fire department that our parades have marshals walking next to the vehicles?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Um, I think the chief would like to engage on it. We did a presentation, multiple pages. I was involved in that way back. I mean, it had to be three or four years ago on parade safety and, and what have you, um, that included some specific considerations, not do this, do that, but think about shorter, shorter's better. It, it offers less exposure for vehicle incidents, trouble, what have you. Um, think about barricades on the side of the street to keep people on and behind the, the curb. Same, same problem as this, those kids dart out. I mean, you've seen them on the videos and it's crazy. So anyway, I can gather up that packet and share it again with you in writing. I don't have to stand up here and do it. I'll just make sure you have it.
I, I just want to be clear that this is not falling on deaf ears and it makes me very uncomfortable every time we have a parade where people are throwing candy and kids are running for the candy. Um, because, you know, everybody's got a different view of parenting and, you know, some people, for whatever reason, let their kids run out and grab candy when there's fire trucks around. I, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm interested in the solution. Um, and, and is it marshals and do we need to increase the number of volunteers that we require to permit a parade? I, I, I mean, I, I would, I, I, I feel bad for you that you keep coming and bringing it up and I would like us to work to solve it.
Well, like I say, I, I think, uh, a witch. Um, don't want to speak ill of, uh, guys walking alongside or at all. I mean, that's certainly any, any action in this area is probably a good action. So, but again, if you had those and barricades, then you, you'd solve a good deal of this.
I just do want to know, we did, you know, make some, some changes this year. We didn't get to fully see them play out because of the Fourth of July parade being, being canceled. But, um, you know, we made some changes. Well, one, we, we do have a separate parade route except for the Fourth of July and, and homecoming. So we have really kind of tightened that, that parade route up to, to address that, that, that concern that had come up. We also went with no parking along the parade route this year, which a lot of the problems that we just had folks in front of vehicles that were parked because they couldn't see and that was already creating this really tight tunnel and making, and putting people that much closer to vehicles. So, um, taking the cars off the street, there's a lot of safety benefits to, to doing that. Um, and then we have asked the parade organizers that they, they have to have, yeah, marshals or whatever they're calling them that where we actually give them baths. We give them for a lot. Yeah.
You made that in place.
Where they actually are keeping, especially it's really, it, predominantly at the intersections typically where we start to see some encroachment into the route where they're responsible really keep those, those routes, you know, more open. So, um, so we, we have, you know, listened, you know, I've met with the chief. We've discussed all these kind of safety improvements. He was, you know, certainly on, on board with, with what we implemented for this year.
And I've also noticed that, um, uh, the last few parades, they're not throwing candy in the street. Um, uh, I see the volunteers are on the side, uh, passing them out. Um, and I noticed they've been really good at, about doing that the last few parades.
I think you put that in, isn't it in the requirements for the, for the answer?
Sure.
So that's, yeah.
That's the other thing we're doing. We're shit. Whenever we have a safety meeting, we're, we're kind of actually closing the loop down. We're taking all those conditions from that safety meeting and that's a basically a condition of their approval of their event. We're putting it in writing so that way everybody has all the same information and it's, you know, all there and nobody's worried with it. They, I forgot that piece.
Yeah, about like two weeks, four, then, then those responsibilities are done, required so they understand and then spend all really well. Obviously moving to July, we didn't get to see that, but everything was lined up to these successful safety files.
I'm absolutely thrilled.
I think we're getting better, but you know, I would like to see a barricade much like what Douglas does. Um, you know, at, at least along Butler Street. Um, I know, I know that we're talking a lot of work for the DPW and all of that, but, um, it would be nice eventually to go to a, to go to a barricade like that.
Or even, I mean, the, the other one that is the, the ones they use in Holland that are much more portable than, than the big concrete ones, the archer barriers. They're weird. I don't know if you've been, if you've ever been to the farmer's market in Holland that, where the civic center, they block both ends of that with, I think, five or six on each end. And those, those are made in such, I mean, I've seen the videos, you hit that with a car, it literally goes forward and lifts the car off the ground.
Yeah. Remember we used those one time. They let them borrow one, uh, and, uh, the trailer in Scott brought to the council, the cost of, you know, if we were to purchase something like that. What I'm talking about is the, um, the horses, uh, along the street.
Oh, well, yeah.
To prevent people from walking into, that's, that's what I meant by barricade. Uh, yeah, I, in addition to those, it would be nice to have the funds for something like this. Those are very expensive. Yeah.
Well, you buy two a year, they're not as expensive, so.
That's a good idea.
Um, and maybe even cost share with Douglas. I don't know. I'm gassy about it, but-
Going back to the sidewalk sale was obviously a big success and everything, but I noticed there were only soft horses at the streets. They didn't have to have a car parked there. So what was the difference?
Wasn't party to the, I mean, personally wasn't party to the safety meeting.
And the cones were at that outer end. So they were, uh, the, the cars were parked along Butler Street blocking and then soft horses and the cones were at Water, Water Street and Griffith Street. So the outer of streets, not the streets, um, up by the side.
Yeah.
On Butler Street, by the sidewalk sales. Those were all outside. Butler Street was cars all the way down. And then you're seeing there are horses and the cones were on your outer street, next outer street down is-
So that worked beautifully.
And that's, that's what we've been doing from Black Hitch.
I mentioned that thing last time about the stickers for your volunteer cars that add an air of officialdom. The same deal with, uh, marshals. I mean, I was at an event where I marshaled for somebody parking cars and they gave you a, a flimsy, but it, I mean flimsy in terms of weight, but it was structurally sound, you know, bright green-
Identifies you.
Yeah, vest that go, could, the thing couldn't have cost two bucks.
Maybe it does.
I mean, that's, again, it's, it, it helps, all those people are there probably because they're going to have to say to somebody, hey, back on the sidewalk. And if they look just like-
Sure.
Ben Fox, I'm going to get a middle finger and that's that, you know? Or, or-
Or, or you might get hit by a car.
Whatever.
I'm absolutely thrilled. I was out of town for the fourth. I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled that this was in place for, for the fourth, even though we didn't get to deploy it. So I'm looking forward to seeing it at our next parade. That's great news.
What is it? Homecoming.
Oh, that's cars though, isn't it? So, but still.
But there's floats and-
There's floats and-
Oh, yeah.
And you're, it's going to be hard to stop the school students from throwing candy.
Department and-
It's gonna be hard to stop the kids from going crazy. So, yeah.
Excellent, Jamie. This is, we're off cycle because last meeting I presented the July statistics with the exception of life, which I'll present tonight. Um, but I don't have to go through all the rest of those statistics, which we went through last time. But, so this week, cause our, our meeting was just a week ago today. And in that meeting, the highlights here, we reviewed those incidents, that statistics you've already seen and talked about. Um, the board, uh, was updated both by the chief and by people, people on the board, briefing their fellows on the municipal bonding approach to funding the South Station. Um, there is coming out of that, there's a September ninth meeting, I think it's 11 o'clock in the morning, a workshop meeting at Sagatuck Township, w- wherein those, that structure of municipal bonding, uh, will be discussed with the, uh, township board. And that meeting includes the, uh, the, uh, bonding experts, for lack of a better word, who serve, uh, who have served the township and have served Aligon County in this area before. So there's experience in the room, uh, again to discuss and aiming to move forward on the acquisition of that piece of property. So stay tuned on that. I don't know if I explained in great detail. I hope I didn't because I don't want to repeat, but the bonding, each jurisdiction, each municipal jurisdiction has bonding authority. The fire district does not have bonding authority. And so to accomplish any major project using bonding, paid back by, uh, tax receipts to the fire district, one of this, one of the jurisdictions has to move that forward. Uh, the township was chosen because the amount, the jurisdictions, you probably know this better than I do, can bond has a finite top limit related to property values, I believe, uh, township or city, whatever. Uh, and the, and so there, if a township or a city is up close to that maximum, they would be disinclined from using up whatever was available for put-siders like us. In the case of the township, the, the gap there is extremely wide. So, uh, their initial read from the township manager and one of the township, uh, supervisors or whatever they call them, who's also on the fire board, was very positive that this could, this could be done. There's no, there is virtually zero risk to the township in this process, financial risk to the township. So anyway, that's what, that's headed for. You're welcome. That's an open meeting, I'm sure, on the 10th or on the 9th, 11 o'clock. Uh, chief announced that they had been a donation and delivery from Ray's Towing. Ray's Towing is in Fenville. They gave us five wrecked cars, which is pretty cool because we can then further wreck those cars using the, teaching the guys how to use the jaws of life and what have you. We've got new people. So it's a very, they, not only they, they bring them, we're finished with them, they're going to get the hell out of here. So works on, works on both ends. Um, and then I'll show you the next chart. We reviewed, just show you this for information. We talked a little bit more about it than expect, remember, tonight, the 10-year apparatus costs, incidents and maintenance. And I show you this, this next chart, please. Just to let you know, the extent, uh, that the district and the chief and his people go to maintain accountability and, and records related to the equipment, which is, which is a major, major expense for the fire district, all the way down to cost, cost per month. You can see cost from now on the boats because we don't measure it that way, but, and, and everything else. And oddly, the, you know, smallest pick of the mule-
I noticed.
Is the highest.
Uh.
It's 17 miles.
Right.
You're putting a number over a very few miles. Anyway. I found this fascinating. We were in the army, this is kind of stuff we loved. So, next one, please, Jamie. These are the life statistics again for July that weren't-
I'm sorry, can you back up just?
Sure. Jamie can, I can.
Um, okay, so this is just your operating cost divided by the number of miles that you, it doesn't include depreciation and, got it? Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Imagine those numbers would change dramatically if you included the cost of the asset.
Um, we obviously have total acquisition costs. Um, but these, again, as you say, these are just operating costs.
Yeah.
So, okay. And I think the next chart in the fire district, not this chart, but the next chart in our packet had to do with acquisition costs and what have you. So, which are disgusting, to be honest with you.
I can imagine. I think your mule won't be as expensive if you include the, your mule won't be that expensive if you include your, your pre-gradating cost.
Right. It'd be just fine. Uh, so this is, this is for the, again, this, and I'll have the map is the next chart here, but the, this is for the entire fire district, not just for Sagatuck. Overall compliance against the county standards, county medical standards, higher, uh, priorities, ours, can you see the process about- Show the next chart, please. We can come back if you want to, but this is, you can see how they laid out. For you get both Douglas and Sogatuck, but it looks like there were priority ones in Sogatuck, turn my eye. I don't have addresses for these. And hopefully that's about to drop. Um, next one uh, goes to, I had showed you this chart before. Uh, the bar chart showing the increase, the gray bars, current year increases in calls uh, for service from Douglas Cove. And it has gotten a little nutty. Uh, we talked about that at the board meeting and believe it was early this week, if not it was late last week, whatever, whenever, whenever the nineteenth of August was. Uh, the chief and deputy chief visited with two of the top people at Douglas Cove and had a productive meeting. This is sort of the first attempt to use the bully pulpit to drive these numbers down. And that, you can read what, how the chief characterized that. Forget what AA stands for, DON is Director of Nursing, Administrative, something, I'm guessing the A thing. And the senior most person at Douglas Cove was not in the meeting, because she was on a on a vacation, but they were gonna brief her and what have you. So, again, we'll continue watching and uh, and, and stay alert. One of the things they said, which made some sense, they can't take cell phones away from the people, patients. Self-encur- entitled. And one of their patients likes to call nine one one. And so they, they're alert to that, we're alert to that, and it's probably already at the level where we could easily invoke cost recovery from that individual, so sometimes a three or four or five hundred dollar bill causes a change in heart from people making, in the same way we would do cost recovery on multiple uh, false alarms to the same place, same deal. And I think that's it. Oh, no, I'm sorry, one more. The, I thought you'd be interested, the Fire Chiefs Association on which Greg serves made a five thousand dollar donation, uh, not, obviously not just our fire district, but Elgin County Fires Chiefs Association in support of the Elgin County Safe Schools Program, which remains a uh, a favorite point of attention for Chief Janik. And I'm not sure, they're in the process of scheduling off time active shooter training in the schools that's been done before and is a worthwhile thing to have in place. Everybody knows who's doing what, when, and without thinking about. So, anyway, this was nice. Now, that's, that's the last. Your, Greg and Mike Betts, have any questions?
Questions for Dan? Thanks, Dan.
Again, if you, I'll send that, if you want, I'll send that presentation in your email and, and the parade thing from wherever long ago.
Yeah, I remember do- doing that before, but I'd like to see it again.
Absolutely. And I, and I can't swear that every bit of that is still viable, but at least it's Christ.
And, and thank you for sending that to us before the meeting. Uh, gave me time to look at it before you came up here, so I appreciate that.
You must have said, she does. I, I sent it to Jamie as quickly as the process of receiving it from the, from the fire chief, or the fire district, and then putting it into this format takes, and I have a staff of one that's involved in that effort, so that bears.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Great, inner urban.
Um, I'd like to take a real quick minute to um, to explain something, or to uh, read something that Becky put together. Understanding the Inner Urban Transit Authority Services Funding and Community Impact. Um, the Inner Urban Transit Authority has existed since nineteen eighty. We're funded by three different sources, five, three, one, one federal operating assistance, which covers eighteen percent of eligible expenses. We receive an estimated thirty point five eight nine percent of eligible expenses from the state of Michigan. Local revenues collected as a tax levy currently at point five, or one half mil, which equals to point or, I mean, equals to fifty cents each one thousand dollar taxable property value from the township of Sogatuck, the city of Douglas and the city of Sogatuck, along with rider revenue. The director secures grants for op- operating expenses, new buses, facilities and green initiatives. The Inner Urban Transit Authority has signed a master agreement with the FTA, that's the Federal Transit Administration. Uh, it is a recipient and must comply with applicable federal laws, regulations and requirements that follow applicable federal guidance except, um, except as the federal government determines otherwise in writing. The FTA guarantees must adhere to the Civil Rights and ADA, um, American with Disabilities Act. All our revenue vehicles require a lift, Title V and DOTs implementing regulations, equal opportu- equal employment opportunity and disadvantaged business enterprise. Inner Urban Transit Authority employs six now, we just hired a new one, full-time employees, one executive director, one full-time mechanic, and now sixteen part-time employees. We just hired three more. And three seasonal employees. We have six active board members, we have nine revenue, uh, nine revenue vehicles that are lift-equipped. Two buses can carry up to seventeen passengers, and seven buses can carry up to thirteen passengers. We average seven to ten riders per hour, per bus. From April to June two thousand twenty-five, we carried four thousand sixty-four people with disability, um, with, um, with disabilities. Um, in May two thousand twenty-five, we carried six thousand four hundred sixty-one riders. In June two thousand twenty-five, we carried nine thousand nine hundred twenty-four riders. And in July two thousand twenty-five, we carried fifteen thousand five hundred twenty-four riders, which is a record, record month. It was up one thousand nine hundred three passengers, and it's the highest we've ever had. It's an all-time record uh, that beat our last record by a hundred and sixty-three riders. Um, our riders' fares change from fifty cents to five dollars. We deliver prescriptions from Alexander's Drugstore for two dollar fee. And we deliver food from local restaurants for a three dollar fee. Public transportation expands access to resources by making it easier and more affordable for people to reach essential job access, education, healthcare, food security, community engagement and economic inclusion. And so I just, I just wanted to read that off and um, for folks that, you know, not everybody knows, knows our mission statement or you know, the, the gist of it all and why we have to have the buses that we do and, and the equipment that we use, so just to clear that up. Um, other than that, um, uh, we had a very short meeting, um, and uh, and uh, our ridership again was up. Um, we are in great financial standing right now, because we were able to adjust our budget uh, because of the cutbacks. And uh, we will be, I will give you a hint, we will probably, we've been at that point five mil for twenty years, I think now. Um, before that, we were at one mil, so I believe that next fall, you can expect us to be on the ballot um, to ask our citizens to help support us as we have grown and um, and, and provided more service, more riders uh, going more places.
Thank you, Bernard. Joe, Cal, um, Cal Lake.
Yeah, once, once again, thanks for having me follow this year. Just, just a couple of things. Um, I think I mentioned in our last meeting, the board was considering uh, splitting the role as they replace the blast operations manager, creating two roles, and that pretty much was discussed at our last meeting and agreed upon to kind of formalize it. So, the one role will pretty much be the overall responsible manager that will focus most of their energies on the back office, HR finance, accounts receivable, planning, working with the municipalities, working with the board of directors, that sort of thing. And then the other uh, operations manager will just be that, right? It'll be out in the field when necessary, focusing on the all outside plant and side plant workforce management, those types of things, so. Um, so that, that's pretty much been finalized by the board. They also put in place an advisory committee to develop the job requirements. Uh, make sure that the interviews are you know, administered and coordinated and that there's a board member, you know, we're sitting through each, each member candidate that comes through the pipeline, so on and so forth. So that's kind of uh, work in progress. There are a number of interviews that are being scheduled right now, so I think there's a good, healthy you know, pool of candidates that are interested in the job, which is important, because you know, getting, especially getting the right licensing and all that sort of thing. Other than that, uh, pump station eight requires some costly repairs. There's some water intrusion into a dry well that since has been fixed, but there was some damage. There's a big electrical panel that's kind of leaning over, and it's gonna be expensive. It's gonna be about sixty thousand dollars to to affect the repairs, so that's coming. Uh, I think there's a room in the budget to cover that, but it's also early in the year, so it consumes a big chunk of it, so. Risk, risk the financial year. Uh, and then there was an election held to replace Barry Johnson as the board chair, Abby Gifford. Bigford won that responsibility, and um, Mears truly got named as the vice chair, so.
Awesome.
That's about it. Questions?
Thanks. Good report. Um, Chris, anything from the, okay? Uh, I don't think there's been a ZBA meeting. Uh, Russ, um, have you, I think?
We are having our next regular meeting on September fourth at six P M.
Awesome. Okay, back to you, Jones, of planning.
Yeah, Ryan pretty much covered it. Uh, you know, we have the survey coming out. Um, we got the format pretty close to lockdown for the September thirtieth open house. Other than that, um, planning agreed to table the zoning consolidation until after the master plan was finalized, which makes a lot of sense, right? Because then any, any zoning changes would be obviously mirrored or, you know, the meth, to the methodology outlined by that plan, so other than that, that's it.
Great. Lauren?
Um, Parks and Public Works meets tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, but we did have a kickoff meeting for the Kalamazoo River Greenway. Uh, that was on the twentieth. Uh, we'll be meeting quarterly with that group. It's a, it's a great group. They are um, working on the big focus for the coming year will be around education about the Kalamazoo River Greenway. Um, treating invasive species. Our middle school students will be out there at the Sogatuck Wilds again this year. Um, treating the invasive species with the O D C. And um, we're just looking forward to uh, meeting with this group quarterly and seeing what they can do. Um, O D C is working on lots of different grants. Um, it's really nice to have them as a resource uh, toward grants that, you know, our staff does not have time for, but um, they can work on things and um, I think it's gonna be a really fantastic resource.
Any questions for Lauren?
Yeah, just a quick question. I had a chance to view the meeting and the uh, meeting minutes, item number ten, Cook Park Review. The Cook Park Review discussion was brief and inconclusive. Chair Kimball noted that the park is currently underutilized. Um, I'm just kind of curious as to what she means, and then it goes on to say that they're uncertain about the exact boundaries of the park and confusion about which parks belong to the city versus the yacht club. And it says boatworks, but it's actually the Butler. So, uh, Chair Kimball suggested they need to determine the park's precise boundaries, understand potential leasing agreements and explore ways to make the space more functional. Just kind of curious where this is coming from. The park boundaries are pretty well set. I mean, there's not, there's never been any confusion about the park boundaries.
It was just, um, that was just something that Nancy had questions about because she didn't know. It wasn't anything that the group was discussing. There were more questions that Nancy had.
Okay, and I, maybe next time I see Nancy, I'll ask her about why she thinks the park's currently underutilized, because I think it's heavily utilized.
Yeah, that's just a Nancy opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, track community, non-motorized trail study commu- uh, committee.
Forward to the walk, it didn't happen yet, did it?
Today.
It was today, how'd it go?
So, uh, a very good uh, walkthrough, except for our engineer had a medical uh, issue and had to leave us, but uh, aside from that, it was um, I really appreciated the tribal nations inviting uh, Daniel and I and our engineer uh, to participate. The, the state kind of made it quite clear that that was the first time they'd ever seen that happen. Um, and they don't have those types of um, relationships and, and typically the process um, isn't always as um, you know, collaborative as, as what they're seeing here and us working on the trail right now. So the state was complimentary of that. Um, but it really helped, I think, the tribes to see the, the trail route in person, like, like anything, right? It's one thing to see something on paper, it's another thing to see it in, in person. Um, but it also was really helpful for us to, to understand their perspective, so we're working on getting a, a meeting scheduled for uh, next month to kind of go over some more details uh, with some of our, our pieces that the engineer wasn't able to attend. Uh, and then they're gonna be taking kind of their notes, digesting and kind of looking at uh, what areas might need additional assessment uh, on their part, uh, and we'll go from there.
So you and Mr. Franco were both able to participate?
Yep, yep. Most of the day today with that.
What was your, what was your overall feeling about how it went?
So, I, I, I think it went well. I said, I think we had really good dialogue. I, I think, um, you know, there's, there's some further evaluation that they like done, particularly in the uh, the area near the cemetery and the township, which was not unexpected. Uh, maybe some, uh, you know, rework with the exact trail layout in that section, but not necessarily, uh, you know, uh, uh, response that we, we couldn't necessarily go generally through that, that area. Um, you know, we need to be, you know, certainly sensitive to certain resources that are within our, our area that are important to the tribes, obviously, or you know, for example, our, our trees are important to us as a community, they're important to our tribal nations, and so just really trying to minimize tree removals to the extent possible, especially if they're mature trees. Um, so, um, I, I, I think, um, yeah, I, I think them seeing it in person was, was, like I said, helpful for them and, and maybe hopefully less than some of their concerns that they might have had, and, and for us, it was helpful for us to understand where they're coming from some more.
Who attended from the tribes?
Um, so they have uh, kind of a, a team of tribal historic preservation officers that, that were there, so there were a couple of folks from that office, and then they also have some environmental folks with the tribe that uh, were present as well, that had more expertise in uh, certain species of, of, of vegetation and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Uh, anything from the water system operating contract advisory committee?
Trying to get a meeting together in September.
Yep, yep. I think we're gonna get all the groups back together and some big discussion, so.
Right. Uh, and Scott, anything new on the wildlife?
No, council took action two weeks ago and um, I believe the committee is going to sunset later this year. We did put a expiration date now that I can't recall off the top of my head, if it was end of year or if it was by the beginning of hunting season, but um, I, I don't foresee any reports next few meetings, but you can keep it on the agenda until officially sunset, if you want.
Great. Okay, um, it takes us to approval of accounts payable on page twenty-eight. Got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable on the amount of three hundred ninety thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, just a note, uh, did a little bit of math, and fifty-five point three percent of the costs that you're seeing on here are pass-through costs for property taxes in Sogatuck School District. Um, interesting, a little bit of an uptick uh, for the legal fees, twenty-eight thousand eighty-five oh six, seven point two percent, so just um, just a function of what we're doing, so.
Throw a call vote. Anderson? Yes. Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Bunsey?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carries. Takes us to new business, uh, page thirty, the appointments to the Parking Improvement Task Force. Ryan, do you wanna tee this up?
Yeah, I can. So, so back in uh, mid-July, you all approved the formation of an advisory uh, Parking Improvements Task Force. Um, so since that time, we've, we've uh, put out a request for proposals for some consulting support. Uh, we received uh, three proposals back uh, on that, um, so it's kind of on my list to do a deep dive into, and then depending on um, who's appointed uh, from the uh, council or who the chair is from tonight's meeting, hoping to get um, at least the, the chair and, and probably the mayor and I uh, together to kind of uh, set up some um, interviews of those firms, to ask them further questions and kind of dive into their uh, proposals some more. Um, but in addition, we also put out notice that we were accepting applications for the various uh, positions on the, the task force. Um, all of the positions received one applicant except for one. We received two folks that were interested in serving as the city resident, non-business owner representative. Um, so the mayor kind of took that and discussed with the uh, council member Munsey, and um, uh, they brought forth a recommendation to you that you consider kind of expanding the task force a little bit to include both of them. Um, and that in this case, they don't uh, believe that the interviews are, are necessary, uh, given the number of applicants and, and their review of the applications. Uh, because you do have a board and commission selection policy that requires interviews, um, you do need to, you know, essentially agree to suspend that policy related to these appointments, which is allowed under that, that policy itself. Um, but otherwise, the, the recommended appointments are before you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the twenty twenty boards and commission selection policy related to the appointments to the Advisory Parking Improvements Task Force and to appoint the following members, City Council- And to appoint the following members, City Council Representative and Chair Gregory Muncy. Planning Commission Representative Austin Marano. City Resident Kathy Brockington. City Resident Wendy Coulson. Restaurant Owner Representative Alec Paylatner. Retail Business Owner Representative Michael Costitis. Convention and Visitors Bureau Representative Gary Cott. And Interurban Representative Becky Carton Crandall.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Great group. I'm thrilled with the group.
Agreed, very good.
It, I mean, wow, um, and thank you, Wendy, um, for observing. It's, um, it's terrific, I think. I don't know that we could have handpicked a better group, so.
Absolutely.
I think we're fortunate to know all of these folks, um, personally, every single one on the list. And so, um, and after looking at their applications, I had to agree, there wasn't really a reason to have a formal interview.
Great, all right, uh, is this a roll call vote? Anderson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Wendy, and thank you for serving, we appreciate it. Yeah, and thank you, Gregory, for chairing.
Of course.
Okay, uh, with that, we, um, need a motion to go into closed session.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Anyone wish to make a public comment? All right. Thank you, um, now, motion to go into closed, oh.
I don't, I didn't see anybody, no.
Okay. I'm going to try one more time.
Yeah, that's okay.
We get a motion to go into closed session.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move into a closed session pursuant to M C L 15.268 E and H. To discuss a confidential written legal opinion regarding the ongoing lawsuits filed against the city by Dunridge. Captioned Dunridge versus City of Sagatuck, case number 22-65713C K. And Dunridge versus City of Sagatuck, case number 21-64709C Z. Regarding trial or settlement strategy, which is discussed in an open meeting, would have a detrimental financial effect.
Second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
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 Stan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, Wendy. Long time no see.
Yeah, thank you all very much for.
We are back in open session, we are at, uh, Agenda Item 16, Correspondence on Page 56. We had a letter from the Knights of Columbus, um, council comments. Joe, you want to start?
Uh, the sidewalk scale was fantastic. It was so fun to walk around, see all the people enjoying themselves and have a special event around that. So thank everyone who's helped make that big success for the town. Had a great conversation with one of my neighbors this morning whose. Daughter was present, was going into high school, I think maybe a friend of. Another neighbor's daughter. Anyway, it's exciting to see the kids go back to school and also remind her that we're heading into fall and weather's supporting that as well. So it's my favorite time of year and I'm looking forward to it. And, um, yeah, I just want to thank Gregory for taking on the Parking Task Force because that is truly going to be a, uh, a challenge and hopefully a rewarding experience.
I think so, I think it will be.
Good meeting tonight, thank everyone for. Their discussions.
Um, I would like to, uh, piggyback on what, uh, your comments were at the beginning and thank Douglas, um, Douglas for taking on a great, um, great project there. And, uh, helping to, uh, bring affordable housing here. There are a lot of things, uh, back and forth and maybe a few, like you said, residents that weren't too happy about it. But I got the chance and the opportunity to talk to Matt Ballmer, who stopped by the flower shop and picked up, uh, flower for his, uh, wife. It was, it was her birthday. And, uh, he has a great way of talking about it and explaining the process. Really took the time to say it. I know he said something on Facebook, but it's a lot more thorough. And he, he told Franny Martin and I, we were kind of sitting there and he, he let us know that, hey, let anybody know if they have any questions. They can go right up to Matt Ballmer. He's got a great way of, of, a really, really kind of, uh, breaking down what it's really all about. And so, um, just a reminder, it's really important to reach out to those folks that are part of the issues when you really want to know the real story. And then other than that, we've got two more music in the parks. April Gundy has done a wonderful job with that. And, uh, we've got, uh, this Wednesday, there will be Rock Shop. And, uh, following, uh, Wednesday will be September 3rd. Um, and that will be the, um, uh, the Sea Cruisers. So, um, uh, just like you were saying, a lot of great events in this town. And then another thing, um, talking to merchants like, uh, Patty Berry, uh, uh, the folks at American Spoon and. And, uh, lots of the merchants where I live and, uh, down the block. A lot of folks are saying this was a very banner year this year, uh, with, um, with, uh, bigger numbers than they have seen in their stores, um, ever. So, um, I, I just think that we're very blessed to have what we have. And another, I do it all the time on the radio show, but a shout out to our D P W. It amazes me that with just what, we've got five or six full-time employees. And all the work they do with the tens of thousands of people that we visit every year or that we, uh, entertain every year. I, they, they do a wonderful job keeping it clean here and doing a great job. So another shout out to them. And then finally, I noticed this week, there's a kind of hush, which I like every summer. And this is that time of year where kids are going back to school. And so there are starting, I'm starting to see here and there some extra parking around town. And, uh, it's getting a little bit easier to park in town and, uh, so, which is nice.
Yeah, if you, if you see one of our local teachers, thank them, um, because they'll start tomorrow. And wish everybody a, uh, happy Labor Day weekend and, um, looking forward to seeing you all at the Mount Bald Head Challenge the week after, so, or the two weeks after, whatever it is.
Everybody has said all of the wonderful things, but really, uh, Gregory being chairperson of the Parking Task Force, uh, thank you. It's a big ask, but I know you're going to be fantastic at it and I'm just thrilled that, um, it'll get started and, and we'll start tackling that problem.
We've got great people on the task force and that's going to make it easy for me.
Absolutely.
Yeah, uh, great comments, good meeting this evening. I do want to mention that the Spear Street Back Party, which thank you, Councilmember Muncy for attending. We did a little, we probably had about 75, 80 people and, um, it was a great event. We're going to do it again next year. We did a little bit of research, this has been going on since 1984 was the first year that we held it. So even though it says the 13th annual, that's, anyway, we've now since discovered 1984 was the first year for it. So, uh, it's a great event, building community and welcoming our neighbors. And I can tell you the number of short-term rentals, people that have come up and said, I want to move here. Because we invite them, if they're staying, if, if they're staying next to our house, I'm saying, if you're here, you're our neighbor. So it's just an effort to make this a community and people, people really respond to it, so thank you for coming.
Oh, and don't forget to mention the chocolate chip cookies, which disappeared within, within 40 minutes.
I know, you tried to give me a heads up, I tell my guy, no, they're gone, so yeah.
I'm batting cleanup, so ditto and good night. So Gregory, just a, a little visual, I, uh, had coffee with Sandra Randolph last week or the week before. This is her folder of, um, short-term or parking recommendations. Back to 1994, I think. The city has scanned them all and, but I love it that she kept a folder and passed it on, so we can benefit from that.
Okay, and are you going to, give, give that to me so I can do some homework?
Start reading.
I'll put it on my desk and I'll have something to do.
Yeah.
But you did, you did, uh, scan all of this, so we do have it, that's great. But yeah, I'll give you the hard copy in a, in a week or two after.
Um, and then my final thing is I've been just, uh, hearing a lot of love for the playground. It's about four or five different people, um, have come up to me recently and tell me how much they love the playground. So it's great, um, to have that part of our community. And with that, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Uh, all in favor, say yes.
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 Meeting adjourned.